I'll to order tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. Roll call please.
Ms. Conover?
Here.
Mr. Avia? Ms. Stecadi?
Here.
Ms. Coyle?
Here.
Ms. Hoover? Ms. Redonia? Mr. Marin?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, deliberate, infinite, and just as for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues and student discipline.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Stecadi?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel rec- number one, personnel recommendations. Rosie Vasek, night custodian, Westmont High School. Allison Burns, volunteer for fall play, Westmont High School.
It's all moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Okay. Next we have our items for information and discussion, and I think we have some folks here from the elementary school to discuss the STEM program.
Hello everyone. Lindsay Petersak, Principal at Manning. I'm so excited tonight to bring great news and celebration for this school year, especially coming off of a pandemic year and knowing that we have faced still a lot of challenges. But we're here to celebrate the awesome work that Mr. Ritz, the team of teachers, and most importantly, the impact it's had on our students. So hopefully a bit of good news and celebration as we're trying to find the positives of moving forward. So I want to introduce Mr. Steve Ritz, who is our STEM teacher for grades two through five.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, board. My name is Steve Ritz. I've been teaching here at CUSD for about 19 years now, at Miller for fourth grade for a long time. Moved over to Manning last year, and then I got my, I guess, one of my dreams is to teach science and STEM to the students of Westmont. So I'm happy to have filled that position this year. So I'd like to just give you maybe a little introduction of what STEM is, and then I have some of my fellow scientists here who are going to come up and say some things about STEM. Let's see, go to the next here. So if you don't know, STEM is just an acronym for science, technology, engineering, and math. And that's, we kind of touch upon those subjects during our class when we, when they, when we meet once a week for each classroom. Just want to give you a little bit of maybe some research because it's always good to have some background in that. Says STEM education is needed so students are prepared for the ever-growing field of STEM-related careers. In 2018, the Pew Research Center, they did some, they showed some data that shows some of the, I picked like three interesting facts that I think are important for STEM nowadays. It says, out of the 20 fastest-growing occupations in the, in the United States, 15 of them require significant math and science preparation. If people who are in STEM fields now and in the future can ex, I'm sorry, in the future can expect to earn 26% more money in, in non-STEM jobs. And then this one always, this one is, is what really is feeding my motivation for STEM, is that 92% of boys and 97% of girls lose interest in STEM if they're not engaged by fifth grade. So that's what, that's, that's right there is driving my enthusiasm and motivation for STEM. STEM education introduces students to new subjects, not necessarily taught in regular classroom settings because as you probably, a lot of you know, is this a lot in the regular classroom to cover and get, go over. So we can do like fun things like, and important things like coding, computer science. We could touch more on physics and chemistry, and then the mechanical and electrical engineering is another one that I've been touching on as well in my STEM class. It provides more opportunities for teaching and learning in many different methodologies. So project-based learning, so you give them a project and they have to come to the, get, get to the outcomes that they all agree on. Problem solving, a lot of problem solving, and then collaborative learning, working with each other, learning from each other. Okay? The process of inquiry is the natural way a child learns. This one also is dear to me. I, I love it when, when students are engaged and in their, get the hands, you know, get their hands dirty in what we're, what we're doing. Just recently, we were, kids were watching a video on, on circuits, and then they got to build them in my class. They got wires, they got the batteries, they got the bulbs, so they got to do it and not just see it or read it. Second graders are growing plants, and we all were in amazement that our plants were growing in the lockers. They're trying to find the light. I, amazed me too. We opened the locker and there were these plants growing in the dark because there was just a little bit of light poking through the lockers. And just, just that amazement that how is that possible? And then going through that, going through that with the second graders was, was great. And then last on my slide there, STEM offers another way for students to practice 21st century skills like media, technology, literacy, productivity, social skills, communication, flexibility, and initiative. So that's the research. All right. Why STEM works here at Manning, okay? STEM allows dedicated time for this type of content. As a classroom teacher myself, it was difficult sometimes to kind of fit all this other stuff in because we got to, we got to cover the math. We got to cover the reading and get those kids prepared for that. And then it was hard, this kind of was hard to do because preparation alone for some of these things is kind of hard. You're getting supplies, getting the materials. So it allows, it allows more dedicated time for this, and then classroom teachers can, can, you know, can dabble in, in some of this stuff too as well, but they can really focus on the, the math and the reading. Students are getting more quality time to work on inquiry-based skills. And I know one of our district goals on the strategic plan is for student achievement and growth for 100% of students engaged in experiential and, and inquiry-based learning by 2027. So I think this kind of helps, hopefully gets us to that 100%. And then NGSS standards, that's the National Next Generation Science Standards, are being covered more consistently, more in depth, especially in fourth and fifth because fourth and fifth are
Hi, I'm Savannah in third grade. I'm here to share why I like STEM class. We learned about plants and now we're learning about seeds. There are three different kinds of seeds in apples. Did you know different seeds make apples taste different? STEM class, sometimes we do experiments. Sometimes we can, are learning about coding and animation. I feel excited for STEM class because I'm wondering what we'll do for next. Thank you for inviting me to share.
My name is Nora Harrison and I'll say a few sentences about how I like STEM. One thing I like about STEM is we get to do experiments, like when we got to do taste testing apples. Another thing I like about STEM is I learn new things every time I come to STEM. One more thing is I like seeing my students and all of my friends. And that is why I come into STEM.
So this one is from Christina in third grade. She said, my name is Christina. I like STEM because we did apple tasting. She learned at a flower, there's, there's a flower that smells like a dead body. And we made spaceships out of marshmallows and toothpicks on our SIP day Wednesday. I'd like to end with just showing you a few, a couple slides with some pictures of some of the things that we've been doing in STEM. So we got some circuit building here, circuit simulators. There's our marshmallow spaceships, some pipe leaner towers. Upper, upper top, that third one up top, we're, second graders are making grass head dolls, kind of like Gia Pets. Some more circuit building. And then my, 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 my classroom is awesome. I've taken the community room away from some people, but it's really been a pleasure to have that space to kind of spread out and have them work on, on projects in that room. I'd like to close with just a couple thanks. I want to thank all the teachers at Manning who have supported the program and me through the process. Administration for giving me, giving the chance for Manning to have a STEM program and for the kids to have this opportunity. And then a big shout out to the PTO at Manning and the parents at Manning. Man, they stepped forward and they have donated so much stuff to the STEM program. And a big special shout out to Mrs. Shannon Roddy to kind of spearhead a lot of that donation stuff. So been really, been really happy, happy to have them. As you can see, I think it's been making an impact on some of the, on the kids at Manning. So is it for me? Is there any questions for me?
Yeah. Perry the platypus.
Yes, Perry the platypus. That's, that's, that is, is that something that's been, been, been talked about at home?
No, I, I was in, I was in your room the other day. And I'm like, Mr. Ritz has got a lot of Perry the platypus in here.
I am, I guess not a secret anymore, but yes, it's, I'm a Perry platypus fan. When my girls were that high, that was a big show on Disney. So we got the, we watched it a lot. So I like the secret agent, Perry the platypus. Platypuses are just a great animal. They're so unique and different.
I just figured maybe you're a secret spy. I don't, you know.
It could be, it could be, you never know.
What supplies do you need, I know some donations have gone out. What kind of supplies can the community donate?
Well, we're in the process of now going into, looking, planning, well, looking at second quarter. I think we got covered for second quarter. So third and fourth quarter, we're in the process of planning those out right now. So I was going to give Shannon another list of supplies that I would need for that. So I guess look forward, something maybe starting late November here or December with another list of needed supplies.
And we can, Kevin, get that posted on, on the district website and the school websites, I'm guessing?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, that'd be good. And I just, I just want to say thank you. Like I-
You're welcome.
Science is, science is a very near and dear to my heart. And we always go, science, whatever like science happens in real life.
Yes.
And it's amazing. I think it's a really wonderful silver lining to, you know, the situation that we're all in. Grade level centers this year was, was not an easy transition or decision. And to be able to have our kids explore STEM from second grade on is just, it's, it's heartwarming. And I also think it really speaks to, one of the biggest things that our community, our school community asks for out of our children is to be problem solvers. STEM is teaching our kids from very early on to be problem solvers. And the addition of being able, in both schools, to have art and music all year round in addition to STEM all year round is just, it's really, it's a really wonderful silver lining.
I'm glad to be doing it. I'm glad to be doing it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo a little bit of that. I mean, I, my daughter went to Miller, so she had the good fortune of working with you as a, you know, second, third, and fourth grader in science fairs and that sort of stuff. And I'm just so happy for our district that all of our second through fifth graders get the opportunity to experience your talent and your passion and to participate in the STEM program. And I, I, I'm glad you mentioned the statistics that, was it ninety-two percent of boys and ninety-seven percent?
Ninety-two percent and ninety-seven percent of girls.
Of girls. If they don't, you know, get excited about STEM during these years, these are the years. It's so critically important. And for you girls out there, girls are super underrepresented in STEM jobs, in STEM careers. I know you're not thinking about that right now, but like, this is really good stuff for your future. So I'm so excited for the kids, for our community, and for you personally. This is great.
Thank you very much. I'm excited as well.
I have a question for you. And I want to also echo how excited I am in my, one of my children who's in elementary right now. But my question is about goals or anything in the future that you're, you have in mind that you're working towards for this program?
Oh, that's a good, that's a good one.
I know, we just got started.
Well, I think, right now, I think the kids really need to learn to come on back to school and do some work and work together and problem solve because I think that's kind of, it's lacking right now. We're struggling, some kids are struggling with that. So I think that's a big goal. And they're kind of just diving in in STEM, really, because, you know, they're in groups and they, they're kind of four, we go over the criteria and, you know, this is what a group looks like when they're working together. But then I just kind of, we just kind of throw them in there and they see how they do. So that's a big goal, I think, is, is can they, how can they problem solve, incorporate everybody into the group? So that's, for this year, that's one of my big goals. I guess long-term, getting more of the T, the technology in STEM in my class. Right now, they've just got Chromebooks, right? So I'm thinking, can I do a mini, can I get a mini lab in there so they can do things on the computer that they can't do on a Chromebook? Some more iPads for some of the Makerspace things that Mrs. Johnson has been very grateful, let me borrow from the library. So I think that would be some of the long-term goals. But problem solving and collaboration, I think, is my big one for this year. Thank you.
So I just, I'm as excited as anyone in this room and you're, you're, you're a rock star in our house. So you should know that. You get, you get talked about a lot in very positive ways. To build on Adina's comment, you know, maybe not for today or now, but do you, have you in place, or have you thought about putting in place any measurement of outcomes or measurement of, of, you know, what it means even beyond the fifth grade within the school district? Just thinking about, hopefully, you'll be doing this for a long time with our school district. And, and hopefully, we can have proof of the impact.
Yeah.
It's just something to think about.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it'd be nice to see those, you know, if this program makes, evolve into the junior high and the high school.
Or just the impact on results when, when, when the children move on from this program. Just thinking about it.
Sure.
And getting based, since you're a science, and since you're STEM, getting baseline data now.
Yeah.
And, you know, is-
Yeah, we're in the process of looking at how, how we can assess in STEM and, and report out. Definitely, definitely. Yep. And then you have that fifth, you have the fifth grade standardized state tests that they do in fifth grade and eighth grade, I think it is.
Sure.
That's good, that's also a good baseline as well.
Exactly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you. You look like, it looks like you're making it fun for the kids and I think that's wonderful.
That's what matters.
You know, and keeping them engaged and excited about it, that's a great thing.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
This was really fun and great job to you kids. You guys did awesome.
All right, Kate, I'm going to break in two things to the families out here. Do you guys mind if I snap a quick picture? And second, do you mind if it goes on social media? Everybody thumbs up? We're good? Okay, I just wanted to, you guys can stay where you're at. You can wave if you want. All right. Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Nice, thumbs up.
Can I just close this whole thing or?
I'll take care of it.
You'll take care of it.
So Kevin, top that. Yeah, exactly. Next item on the agenda is the update of 2021, 2022 school year. All right. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Didn't want to stay for the rest of it?
Right.
No.
I miss seeing parents. I haven't seen some of these guys in a while. For the reasons we do it, right? Right? This stuff.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Didn't want to stay for the rest of it?
Right.
No.
Shoot, Lindsay was the first one out the door. I miss seeing parents. I haven't seen some of these guys in a while. For the reasons we do it, right? Right?
All right. So now I'll give my update on the school year, how it's going so far. And again, we've been doing this at each of our board meetings. And always as a reminder, our guiding principles, it's our health and safety of our students, that students and staff is our highest priority. But then also this time, full-time, in-person learning is also a high priority. We want to make sure that we're providing meaningful, engaging academic experiences. We're focused also on the social, emotional needs of our students. We want consistency and stability for our students and staff. And we continue to provide staff development for our teachers. At our last meeting, we were hopeful that we would move from a high level to substantial level of transmission, but we're still at that high level. The positivity rate is improving both locally and in the county. But again, we're still cresting over a hundred thousand new cases, averaging more than a hundred thousand. So that's what's keeping us at that high level of transmission. Again, as of last Friday, our positivity rates, you can see again, our local area is all under three percent. And even locally, our positivity rate is getting below that level. But as a county, we're still above. In terms of staff, since our last board meeting, we've had no new positive cases among staff. So that's been great. And we've only had two since the beginning of the school year. Student-wise, we've had one positive case at the junior high. This is kind of a, a nice anecdotal story to go along with it. That one student did have four close contacts at the junior high. Of the four close contacts, three were fully vaccinated. And so those students didn't need to quarantine. We had one student that was not fully vaccinated and needed to quarantine. So definitely vaccination is, is a great way to keep our, our students in school. You can still, you can see though, we're still sending students home if they have a positive or if they're symptomatic until again, they receive a negative test or a diagnosed, doctor's diagnosis, then they can return to school. So you can see where our numbers are at. Again, the CDC level of transmission, that's what we're, the county is using, that's what we're using. And again, because of the number of cases greater than a hundred thousand, that's why we're at the high level of transmission. We're still under the governor's mask mandate, his executive order. And, and we're physical distancing of three feet. On our buses, we're requiring masks. And we're doing our contract tracing based upon that three-feet guidance. And again, just a reminder, if school districts defy the governor's order, there are consequences for school districts. And so definitely, it's in our best interest to adhere to those executive orders. And as always, a reminder for our school families, if students have COVID-like symptoms, they should stay home and they should have a doctor's note or a negative PCR test. Close contacts, that's defined as one mask, less than three feet for fifteen minutes in a twenty-four-hour period. If you're not wearing a mask, then it's less than six feet for fifteen minutes. And then quarantine, unvaccinated persons who test positive are quarantined. Unvaccinated persons who are in close contact. And then if you're vaccinated, test positive, you need to quarantine. But again, if you're fully vaccinated and no symptoms, then you do not need to. There's been a question, you know, again, it was, you know, if the governor's going to lift the mask mandate. And that's a conversation we started to have at the board table prior to the start of the school year. And then the governor had his mandate and so we kind of tabled it. But if we want to resume this conversation at a future board meeting, we can. But we were talking about metrics as determining when we would go to mask optionals within the district. And so we- rate is getting below that level. But as a county, we're still above. In terms of staff, since our last board meeting, we've had no new positive cases among staff. So that's been great, and we've only had two since the beginning of the school year. Student-wise, we've had one positive case at the junior high. This is kind of a nice anecdotal story to go along with it, that one student did have four close contacts at the junior high. Of the four close contacts, three were fully vaccinated. And so those students are going to need to quarantine. We had one student that was not fully vaccinated and needed to quarantine. So definitely vaccination is a great way to keep our students in school. You can still, you can see, though, we're still sending students home if they have a positive or if they're symptomatic. Until, again, they receive a negative test or a diagnosed, doctor's diagnosis, then they can return to school. So you can see where our numbers are at. Again, the CDC level of transmission, that's what we're, the county is using, that's what we're using. And again, because of the number of cases greater than 100,000, that's why we're at the high level of transmission. We're still under the governor's mask mandate, his executive order, and we're physical distancing of three feet. On our buses, we're requiring masks, and we're doing our contract tracing based upon that three-feet guidance. And again, just a reminder, if school districts defy the governor's order, there are consequences for school districts. And so definitely, it's in our best interest to adhere to those executive orders. And as always, a reminder for our school families, if students have COVID-like symptoms, they should stay home, and they should have a doctor's note or a negative PCR test. Close contacts, that's defined as one mask, less than three feet for 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. If you're not wearing a mask, then it's less than six feet for 15 minutes. And then quarantine, unvaccinated persons who test positive are quarantined, unvaccinated persons who are in close contact. And then if you're vaccinated, test positive, you need to quarantine. But again, if you're fully vaccinated and no symptoms, then you do not need to. There's been a question, you know, again, it was, you know, if the governor's going to lift the mask mandate, and that's a conversation we started to have at the board table prior to the start of the school year, and then the governor had his mandate, and so we kind of tabled it. But if we want to resume this conversation at a future board meeting, we can. But we were talking about metrics as determining when we would go to mask optionals within the district. And so we, one of the considerations was when the county reaches a low level of transmission. And then we have a 70% student-staff vaccination rate in our buildings. They're anticipating, I think now, it's the end of October, beginning of November, the vaccine will be available.
Pfizer. It just, they just applied.
Yeah, they just applied.
Just for the emergency.
Yeah.
Now they have to look at the data, and then get that emergency approval. And so that could be during November, that that could happen. And then it would be, basically, all of our elementary students would be eligible for the vaccine. So, so this is a conversation we can resume if we want, to start planning for that point in time where local control can determine whether or not to wear masks. And then again, the crossing guards has been a topic. And again, just a reminder, that's a contracted service through the village, Andy Fran. They work with the crossing guards. And typically, they're at their post between 7:25 and 8:15. And so shortly after the school day ends, they would no longer be on their post. And then at our next board meeting, we'll have that conversation about busing, crossing guards, and have more data for the board to look at and conversations about that. But actually, when we checked with the village, with the police department, there isn't really a specific timeframe that is contracted for, but rather, it's anticipated that they're out there prior to the start of the school day and shortly after the school day starts. That's when they should be out there. So that's the information I have. If there's any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have one. It's about the previous slide. So, the low level of transmission is defined by CDC, and schools were 70%. Maybe, remind me where the 70% comes from? Why 70, not 75 or 65?
I believe, I'm trying to remember now when we put this together. I believe that was, that's considered.
Herd immunity.
Herd immunity.
Thank you. Herd immunity. And so when you reach 70%, that's considered herd immunity. And so that's why that was initial offering was the 70%.
So I appreciate that you brought this up, because I was going to bring it up anyway, right? I'd love for us to be prepared. We now have the benefit of historical information as much as I would like to not have to be thinking about last year. This time last year, we were starting to see a decrease in the cases, and we were all hoping for the best. And then the holidays hit, and everything spiked again. And we're literally in the exact same timeframe, although with the vaccine potentially on the way. So I think it's important that we potentially reopen that conversation and are prepared for if the governor lifts his executive order, so that when that happens, we're not, we're not in a place where we need to have a special meeting, or we need to talk about it again. And we just have more information at this point. Has there been any information from the Health Department about, like, you know, the 70% was kind of herd immunity for adults? But I know we had talked about the potential for our younger kids not necessarily being able to get to 70% in the schools. Has the Health Department made any indication that the CDC is going to give us kind of like a guideline there, like a 60% or anything like that?
They haven't given us any indication. I know prior to the start of the school year, they really didn't, you know, talk about guidelines for mask wearing or not, you know? They really didn't wade into that conversation. So I don't know necessarily if they will later on this year either.
And we're continuing, you're having weekly, the superintendents are still having weekly calls with the DuPage County Health Department? Is that right, on Fridays?
It's, it's, there's two different groups. Every Friday, it's the high school superintendents. And then, right now, we're every other week with, for the, like, the unit districts and elementary districts.
Okay. And then, I'm thinking through the timeline, right? Assuming that the vaccine is available for kids less than 12, call it, call it November 1st. What was it, is it a month until, because Pfizer was a two-shot?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
A month until full immunity? So we would be talking about really December 1st at the earliest, even if, you know, really realistically, we're talking about a return from winter break situation? Is that, does that timeline feel right? Does that time, like, am I missing something in that timeline?
No, I mean, that makes sense.
Okay.
I think that's realistic, because as you said, it's almost from the day that it is available, it's, like you said, it's a month before you can start talking about fully vaccinated. So I think that timeline works.
A month and a half.
Right.
Close to a month and a half.
A month and a half.
You get that second shot in about a month?
Oh, yeah, because it's two weeks.
That's what it is.
Second shot, yeah.
Yeah. So really, it's Christmas break, for all intensive purposes. And, you know, assuming, I think we saw a little spike after Halloween last year, but really, we saw a big spike. That was when it really went red, right after Thanksgiving through. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Can we talk about, I mean, I think it was coming out of your meetings with the Health Department and other superintendents, that you, you know, maybe got the idea that the governor might be lifting the mask mandate at some point? Is that still a conversation that's happening in those meetings? And what's your, you know, like, what are you hearing about that, I guess, is the bottom line?
We, we didn't have a meeting this week because of the holiday yesterday. So we have not had that conversation again. And I, a lot of it is going to be driven by where DuPage County is at. And so as long as they're substantial, I think once we start to see that trending down, I think then that's when those conversations will start to resume.
Yeah, I mean, because that, to me, makes sense. Like, I don't, I'm not trying to sound, you know, any other way than to say I want our time at the board table to be efficient. So if we start to see DuPage trending down, maybe that's what triggers us to put it on the next agenda, so that we, you know, we have the conversation when we feel like we know we're going to need to have the conversation. Does that make sense? Everybody?
Yeah.
I like, I'd just like to mention that, kind of boasting about ourselves, but we made the decision before the governor.
Right.
So that kind of put it in perspective, I think, for the entire community. But like Kevin said, kind of getting back to where we were when we made that decision, you know? Although it was hard, a hard decision to make, we kind of went through things and brought up kind of caveats and kind of guidelines that we would use. So we kind of need to pick back up, you know, with that. Because I, unfortunately, I think it's like a lot of missing information or guidance. You know, I don't like it that a lot of times, it's just like, okay, school districts.
Right.
Do what you want.
Right.
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 And I think we might be back to that. So what's something we've maintained since this started is that we, you know, looked at guidelines and took those guidelines and used our decision.
Absolutely.
And that. So it's just basically like you guys are saying, picking that discussion up, what guidelines are we using? You know, what, how, what are we looking at, you know, as far as our community or, you know, Westmont as a whole, the average, some of the same things. I do like that we have that, and just kind of pinning that down and going, going from there, what we as a board want to use.
I'm glad that this slide's in your presentation. And I just would think that we would just build this slide. I mean, that's what you've been doing all along.
Right.
Right? Not just with this slide. I mean, with this presentation, what you've been doing all along is saying, here's where we are. I mean, this is a moving target. This is, I mean, if we've learned anything over the last two years, year and a half, it's that we don't know.
Right.
What's coming and what's happening next week. We don't know if this trend downward continues or goes back up, or, we don't know. So, but that you have this slide means everything to me. And as long as we keep building this slide out, then we're doing what we should be doing.
You know, to me, I'm kind of glad you mentioned, like, the CDC guidelines. I saw an article today, two Wisconsin school districts were being sued by parents for not requiring masks, and the kids came home sick, you know? I don't know how the lawsuits will work, but just the fact they're being sued is significant.
Right.
Yep. Regardless of how they go, it's a drain on time and resources to have to go through a lawsuit and defend your, you know, your school district. So, any other questions on this? I guess I, regarding the crossing guards, I know we're going to talk about the PR committee update next. I guess I'm wondering if one of the things with, related to crossing guards, did you guys discuss that at all in your PR committee meeting?
Kind of hit on it.
Because if you didn't, then I'll bring up my comment now. If you did, then I will wait.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
We touched on it, but it wasn't like a significant topic.
Wasn't central to the conversation.
Because I'm wondering if it would be helpful for the community to have, and I feel like this is something maybe on a couple of different topics we could do, but the crossing guards seem to be one that continue to come up on different community forums. And, and I feel like the facts sort of get, it's not always clear what the facts are in some of the times when it comes up. And I, we've had the conversation a couple times here at the board table, and I'm just wondering if a set of, like, frequently asked questions about the crossing guard situation would be helpful to come out of the PR committee? And that way, when the conversation comes up in the forums where it does, we just attach, here's the discussion that's been had about crossing guards, here's who to contact, you know? If you see something, let somebody know, but here's, you know, here's basically the answers to your basic questions.
Yeah, that would be good.
Laura, and unfortunately, people are using those forums, of which I do not partake, to express opinions or beliefs or things like that, instead of coming directly to the administration.
Agreed.
And, you know, we've kind of put that out there before, that if people see something, they have questions about how something works, they don't think something is going the way that it should, it's not fair to the administration for them to have those conversations on those forums without giving us the opportunity, making us aware, and contacting us directly. And so I really, I do have a problem with those forums and the way that's happening, and would like those people to contact me.
Yep.
At my office about what they're seeing, and we need specifics, not generalizations, but actual specifics on what's happening.
Well, that's a, that's a really good, that's a really good thing for a potential, like, these are the FAQs, right? This is what is, you know, these are the, these are the FAQs, and it's really important that you connect with the district office, if you have a specific, right?
Exactly. Here's who to contact.
And very easy, so it's really easy to, here's who you go to, right?
Right.
And let's get that, if you're not seeing a crossing guard out there, if you're not, I know I've seen, the crossing guard at Calson, Norfolk, goes down to marker after us. So like, kind of, but just those pieces, right?
Right.
It would, would be helpful, and just, this is, this is where we're at, and this is who you can go to. Because it is also a village piece, too. We contract through the village, we contract through the, yeah.
Yeah. Chain of command, as always. We've been pushing that for years, chain of command.
Yep. I agree 100%. And thank you for saying that, Kim. I think that's very fair for you to ask for concerned community members to contact the district in situations like that. So, sorry, guys, didn't mean to put more on the PR committee's list, but I think it's going to be really helpful.
Before we get there, as you collect information, like, that you're going to bring back our next board meeting, is that information goes through, like, the crossing guards, and who do we have, and how that will go through until that, I guess, that week or the week before, we'll have, like, information leading all the way to that time?
Right.
Because I've seen, like, from my personal just view, I've seen the lows, and then lately I've seen, like, one area consistently. So, and, you know, as things are changing now, as you're gathering data, like, what we've seen at our lowest point, you know, what we see all the way, you know, to now, and what's going on, and the changes that's happening with hiring.
And just to reiterate, because I went back and I looked at the posting on the, to go to, the posting on our website, to go to Andy Fran, you can ask to just service Westmont. So it's not, it's not super clear, right? Like, if you apply for Andy Fran, am I going to get sent all over the place, right? Like, no, you can. So if there's a community member out there who's concerned about, I would like to apply for this, but I really only like to do it here in Westmont, that is not an issue. That is very, can happen.
I just, I have a side thing. Are we done with this topic? I have a side note.
I think so.
Something else for comment. I really appreciate Steve's presentation about what's going on at Manning. Is there any way we can hear from Miller on how their play-based learning is going, since that's what's been implemented as the equal to the STEM at Manning? I know our kindergarten and first grade teachers are pretty seasoned, they've been there a while. At least they could fill us in on if it's helping in any ways, especially coming in with kids who, two years of kids who didn't have a structured school life in these last two years.
Right.
If we could just hear from some of them. They don't have to have a presentation, but I mean, at least we can hear a report from them at all.
Yes. As a matter of fact, next, our next meeting, the high school over here.
Okay.
But then, and I can't remember the sequence now, but yes, the next few board meetings, the different buildings will be coming.
Awesome.
To talk to the board about some of the things that are happening, the positives, the good things that are happening in their schools.
Okay, great. Good. Thank you.
All right. So, anything else on the school year update? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the Public Relations Committee update.
You want to go, Adina?
I, yeah, I can start.
Okay.
And I can kind of jump to that, the topic of communication and PR. You know, starting, like, it's exciting to me with, in that committee, like, the potential that we have. But I think one of our biggest challenges is, is that PR communications, kind of real-time communication with the community, what's going on, and how to address certain issues, and, you know, having kind of a one-way street with giving information. But how do you do that, and how we do that effectively, not having one person as kind of our public relations person that could do that full-time? So we have that as one of our topics that we want to start to kind of tease out how we're going to tackle that as a committee, you know? We the single person, or how that committee could serve that role with multiple people. So it's a challenge that we don't have a single person to go to, kind of address a lot of the things that we should be ahead of, kind of head of issues, taking on various topics, like you said. But, you know, I've, myself, think there are ways that we can do that in that committee. Does that take more meetings or more communication as a group on how to address, or how often we're addressing all different types of issues? How we do that with social media, with our website? You know, we have, I think, different means of, of different ways, but really, taking some brainstorming to figure out the best way. I don't know if you want to hit on that topic, because we have other things we have to talk about. But I think, I think that's the biggest.
Yeah. Like, how can we go forward with PR when we don't have a dedicated PR person?
Right.
And that also opens up the conversation of where our future is with this. Just getting out on top of things before everybody's just rambling, and not necessarily utilizing everything that the community utilizes. Like, we no longer have paper communication. Like, there's no more media in paper form. It's very limited. How do we reach all those people who aren't on the internet?
Right.
So, yeah, that's a big topic. Put it out for everyone, November 10th, save the date. November 10th is the
Put it out for everyone, November tenth, save the date, November tenth is the Hundred Year Celebration, and we would like all the board members there, but hope, maybe in shifts, because I think it's from four-thirty till eight o'clock. Things will be going on all downtown, it should be closed, the street will be closed here, so everybody will be out schmoozing, celebrating, so, yes, if you guys can all be available for that. Should we sign to our colas? Ooh. It would be fancy.
It's part of our goals, you know, to just communicate how well our district is and all the positives, so we have, actually exciting, that's one of the first things that's going to happen soon, and they have a great program that they're going to have with a time capsule, and each kind of area in Westmont has part of a capsule to put in the bigger capsule and schools, and a district has one, and I think they'll have tables or kind of booths that, that Park District is at, and then the school district, so if we're there, we can kind of, you know, kind of man that area to help Kevin, or kind of be around as the board members.
Are we going to get a big blue ribbon to put in there, Kevin?
Sure.
Get a big blue ribbon to put in for the district?
Sure.
Another huge planning thing that we're doing, it's to celebrate the high school blue ribbon honor, and that's another great event that we have to kind of celebrate the district, so that's something to be on the lookout for, is possibly December?
Possibly December, yeah. Got to look at the calendar and all that, and what everything that's scheduled, so, yeah.
In addition to getting this PR kind of area ironed out, we're, have, you know, a few events that we are talking about to just praise the district and all the positives that we're doing.
Yep.
And then, you know, we can address the concerns and issues and not hide from that either, to get out in front, and that we know that there are concerns. Like I said, we have our frequently asked questions, we know that this is an issue and here's where we are. It's a little tricky, but definitely in our plans.
It is. But, yeah, things to look at. Anything, Carlos?
Yeah, so, two things, one, one is, well, three, three things, excuse me. One, one would be the, in addition to the events that we were discussing with the, with the Hundred Year Celebration and the celebrating the, the blue ribbon status or award, I'm not sure what we want to call that exactly, for the high school, but also talking, looking forward to 2022 and, and a potential, another, what's it called, real estate?
A real estate fair.
Fair, or, not real estate.
No, um, yeah, it's a Realtor, a Realtor.
Realtor, a fair, a fair, basically inviting Realtors in to, to learn more about the district. I think this has been done in the past, and it's a, it's a repeat of this, of this type of thing. That's number one. Number two would just, but, you know, as you can see, for the PR committee to, to be organizing, thinking, you know, a month ahead of something and, and organizing something, that's something this committee can do fairly easily, you know? We can't do everything we'd like to do, but we can do it fairly easily. What's much harder, as Adina said, is, is the day-to-day of PR, so that's a little bit more complicated, and we, we, we're going to have to come up with some creative solutions to deal with that as a district, and it's already been said, so I'll just, I'll just leave it there, but there's a big difference between planning for things and reacting to things.
Yep, absolutely.
And then, the third thing that was discussed at the, at the, at the committee meeting that's really worth saying here, and especially for people who might be watching or listening, and that is that this school district represents more than just Westmont, that this is CUSD two oh one, and there are other neighboring villages that, that should be represented, and we should be thinking about these things, you know, even in the way we refer to the school district as Westmont School District, it's not Westmont School District. And we should all, at this board in particular, but in this community in general, be conscious of that when we, when we talk and in the way we use language. I work for a language services company, I can tell you how important we think language is. Language is really important, and so if we can all, and I say Westmont School District all the time, and I, after that meeting the other day, I'm, I'm going to train myself, and if I'm a jerk about it here, about training you all to not call it Westmont School District, then I'll, I'll be doing that, too, so. That's it.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you for the update. All right, the next item on the agenda is our action items. So the first action item is the authorization for chief school business official to enter into future pricing contracts with Vanguard Energy Services. Kim, do you have anything to share here, or should we just go straight to?
Just, you know, we had entered, given authorization at certain pricing points to enter into contracts, and unfortunately, energy prices have gone up, right about that time, they went up, and so we weren't able to secure energy at that time. So this will allow me the flexibility, and what we're, you know, kind of looking at is probably just buying some January and February, not locking into long terms and hoping that we kind of get that valley again instead of the peaks. And it, you know, maybe, maybe I'm being a little optimistic, but hoping that we've had some warmer-than-normal weather right now, and if production has increased, that maybe we'll see a little bit of a dip and stuff, and so allows some flexibility that if we see something, we can react quickly without having to go to the board for authorization each time.
Any questions for Kim? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize the chief school business official to enter into future energy contracts through June twenty twenty-three for natural gas and electricity with Vanguard Energy Services as needed.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And next item on our agenda, Kevin, your superintendent's report.
So a couple items in my superintendent's report, Thursday, October fourteenth, it will be our second informational meeting regarding elementary task force and the work that was done. Our first one is October fifth, there was a recording of that meeting, that is posted on the website, and so on October fourteenth, from six until seven, and in the high school auditorium will be our second meeting, so hopefully our community will be able to attend, and, and again, shortly after the second meeting, we'll be doing a survey of our stakeholders and getting them to weigh in on the information. Our parent-teacher conferences are scheduled for October twenty-first and twenty-second. They will be virtual, like we did last year, parents can register now for an appointment through Skyward, or they can contact their child's school and schedule their appointment as well. The district received a library services grant, Nadine Norris applied for the transforming library services grant, and we awarded a grant in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, and that grant can be used for technology in the district media centers. And then, last Friday, there was, we're supposed to have a WGN flyover at the high school, it was grounded due to the fog. Tenually, it's been rescheduled for this Friday, the fifteenth, and Sarah Gindra, who is a traffic reporter, grew up in Westmont and is a graduate of Westmont High School, and she's the one that coordinates those flyovers, so hopefully it'll take place this Friday, October fifteenth, usually around seven-ten, seven-fifteen in the morning that will happen.
That's great. Anything else?
Nope, that is it.
Okay, do we have any board reports? I just wanted to mention that Kevin and I did have our meeting with the village that we, that we discussed in the last full board meeting. That meeting was very productive, we talked about potentially having the village board and our board get together on a more, you know, semi-regular basis to just discuss any mutually, you know, concerning topics. So I think as long as, you know, most of the board members are supportive of that idea, we can move forward with that in mind. We also talked a little bit about transportation, and, you know, Steve May had a great suggestion, which was to look into safe routes to school and make sure that we're planning around that type of methodology. And we also talked a little bit about the signage and things of that nature, as well as, you know, planning for the future of, of growth in Westmont and, and different construction that could be happening. So it was a really productive meeting, and I, I think just as a first step, it was a great first step, and I think it could be very productive for us to continue to have future conversations with them, but I just wanted to report back to you guys on that.
And I believe Steve has been village manager for twenty-five years.
Yeah, he's been around.
There's like, he's a wealth of historical information if we're trying to figure out what worked in the past, maybe what didn't.
Exactly.
Yeah, like, he's been through a lot.
Absolutely. Any other board reports? Okay, go on to future meetings and events, it doesn't look like we have any public comments, so I'm going to move forward to future meetings and events. Westmont Junior High PTO meeting is the thirteenth at seven PM. As Kevin mentioned, there is a second elementary future planning task force meeting on October fourteenth at six PM at the high school. SIP Day is October twenty-first, and there will be early dismissal time for all schools, no student attendance on the twenty-second, and then also, those are parent-teacher, it looks like those are parent-teacher conferences, not SIP Days, is that right?
It's a SIP Day schedule.
It is a SIP Day schedule, okay. And then our next board meeting is the twenty-sixth at six PM. So with that, we'll have a motion to, we, we are already finished with closed session, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.